Let's go ahead and get started. And I'll call tonight's meeting to order if you all join me and we'll honor our flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, that the United States of America, the republic of the free, open, and sovereign states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everybody. Good to see you all. I'd like to read the college's mission statement. Dodds City Community College provides a student-centered learning environment where students can achieve their educational, personal, and career goals. And we also open up the floor at the beginning of our meetings for anybody from the public to address the trustees. Have you received anything via email?
I haven't. I haven't even checked my job file.
Okay. Received nothing and I don't know. Mike, do we have anybody participating via Zoom that wanted to say anything? I'm hearing feedback. Is that you, Andrea? Okay. Okay, we're looking. Okay. We'll move on then. We have three sets of minutes to approve. I will entertain a motion when ready.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Sorry. Opposed, same sign? I'll give it a little more delay next time. Okay. So we'll move on to the completion of agendas. Is there any addition to the agendas? We have, if you look at your revised agenda, there's three items, nine, 10, 11, that will be provided, put on consent agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda as presented? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agendas as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? We'll move on to trustee reports. So, Mr. Lewis, you have the floor.
Well, um, can't say a whole lot except, you know, I've been working with Clayton a little bit on the, trying to help direct him toward and get some leads for him on his and some of the instructors that we might need and ideas for the professors, for them different tech ads. And then, you know, sometime we could discuss the idea of the new diesels for the new trucks for the CDO program about maybe getting everybody or getting a great deal and getting them painted in the purple and putting some good-looking logos on it. So I'll get with Clayton and work with him on maybe trying to come up with something very fair to make them really stand out going down the road.
So Jim, on that note, on behalf of the college, we'd like to thank you and Lewis Motors for stepping up and offering to work with the college on showcasing our trucks. So thank you for doing that. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. I would like him to look good going down the road, so I think it'd be sharp.
Yes. Well, we actually have two helicopters now in our Phoenix area. One is gold or one is yellow and one is purple. So that's exciting. All sharp, sharp-looking helicopters.
Yeah.
Okay. So that concludes your statements, Jim?
Yeah, I don't think I have much more except, you know, I tell you what, just thanking the professors and the people going through this COVID deal, I think we're all starting to come out a little bit and I think we kind of sometimes just take them for granted, all the work that went in to getting the college in shape and the students moved around. And we talked about a little earlier today, you know, about the college giving back the four hundred and some thousand dollars to the students that, you know, for the, that they didn't get to finish and some of the dorming costs. So again, I'd like to thank the staff and all the staff of the college for all the work that went through to, for this COVID-19. And I hope we're on to brighter and sunnier days.
Oh, Jim, thanks for bringing that up. And I'd like to take opportunity right now to maybe have Glendon maybe tuck on that a little bit more about the monies that we receive from the CARES bill and then to that reimbursement to the students that you just brought up, so people listening can fully understand.
Yes, there were three allocations from the CARES Act. Two major ones. One of the major allocations were to students for additional financial aid purposes. It was about $474,000. And that was required to be given to students for financial aid. They could use it for last spring and it can even be used for the summer. And if the student demonstrates they're still having hardship due to the COVID virus this fall, they can apply it to this fall as well. We have dispersed most of that to the students and then we will be drawing down, I think we've actually already drawn down to reimburse the college for what we've dispersed. Another portion, a large portion of the $474,000 was directly to the institution for institutional support. That could be given to students as well, but it also could be given to the institution to reimburse the college for loss of revenues. For example, we refunded students who withdrew from the dorms. And so we refunded their housing fees, food service fees. Some students withdrew entirely from the institution. We refunded their tuition fees. So to reimburse the college for those factors contributing directly from the COVID virus, the college is eligible for reimbursement. There are other things. We purchased a lot of laptops for the students so that they could do online learning. We can use, we can use those funds to reimburse the college for the laptops. So those are some type of things that we can use it for. We're also considering using it for a generator, backup generator for our server room. We do not want our servers to go down, especially in a time when we're trying to deliver online services to our students. They're trying to keep tutoring or submit work or whatever. We certainly don't want our servers to be down for a linked period of time. We've not had a generator backup for the server room and that's something desperately needed. So those are some type of things that we're going to use the two major allocations for. Then we were awarded that third allocation, $61,322, as a minority-serving institution. We can use that for students or for the institution. So we're still deciding what to do if there's any additional needing students.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Fergie, for bringing some color to that. So Jim, anything else that you'd like to add to your report?
No, just thank everyone.
All right, thanks. Kathy?
Well, I'd like to remind everybody to fill out their census forms or online because everything that we do helps build this community with funds for very specific areas for our children and adults and senior citizens. So if you haven't filled that out, please do fill that out. And then I'd like to say what a good job everyone is doing on enrollment and getting our students enrolled and helping them fill out all the information. And then the third comment I'd like has to do with our community garden. And it is a marvelous opportunity for people to show their gardening skills. But in doing that, we have to remember that this is a community college and we have young adults and students out here. So if you're going to come out and do your gardening, please dress appropriately. Wear shorts and a shirt or slacks and a shirt. But we've had some that, if my granddaughter was going out there, I would have been not very happy. So if the community is using our garden, please, please dress appropriately for our students to see. And that's mine.
All right. Thanks, Kathy. Mr. Turley?
Um, it's just good to see everybody getting out and things opening back up again. I'm ready to get the community rolling and I don't have a whole lot. I just thank Carla for shuffling all the paper our way and keeping me straight. So about all I got.
All right, thanks, Bill. Maya?
I would like to bring up the COVID-19 Preparedness Committee and compliment our, we have outstanding leadership in that committee by Kristy. And the entire group has really spent a lot of time and effort thinking through how we deal with the pandemic previously, now, and in the future, beginning to really think about how we make this a safe environment for students and faculty and staff and the community. And that is a very interesting committee and I am thrilled that I was asked to join it. It's fascinating, truly.
All right. Dan?
I don't have a report tonight.
Okay. Kelly?
I just wanted to talk about the CDC and thank them for getting it opened back up. And we had a little setback in that facility. I know I've talked about six different parents that had been using the facility and were really happy to get back there. And one of the participants in there told me they were really happy to get back to school because they considered that school. I know we had a little, we're going to have a little two-week setback on that. And I've talked to several people that have, that had their kids in that and they've been tested or went and got tested and they were all negative to this point so far. So we feel like that's all going to work out, work out really well and look forward to getting that back over. But the staff and everybody handled that very professionally, was taken good care of. Everybody was communicated with very well. So just want to say thank you for that because it is a vital need for our community.
Let me add a little bit to that as well. If we did have a staff member that was tested positive, she was asymptomatic. And it made me wonder how many of us may be asymptomatic and not know it until we're tested. But I did direct the director to go ahead and waive or refund the fees, tuition fees while we're not providing services to the families. So we don't, certainly don't want to charge them while we're not operating.
Okay, thanks. Are you done?
That's it.
You know, on that, I think, you know, you guys, a lot of you touched upon this, but you know, we've all had to adapt, adjust, and modify. And I think, you know, I compliment your administration for adjusting. And as far as, you know, childcare, we think the college needs to do everything it possibly can to help get our economy, our system back going. So that's important. So as we go into this next school year, we need to do everything we can to help get things jump-started and going. I know you will. And then it's also time to embrace that really, the new age, you know, there's going to be more online. There's just a lot of things that are going to be positive that come out of this. Things that we realized that we should have been doing, that we just said, well, we don't really need to right now, but now we can say, we kind of put our toe in that water and say it's not so bad. So now we just need to go on full speed with so many things that we've learned and embrace it. So, Dr. Nolte?
Thank you. That's a great segue. We had a Zoom meeting last week with Roger Marshall. And Roger, Roger basically said, he said he was very impressed with our community. He was very impressed with the USD and the college and how well we worked together. Matter of fact, he said, he said, this is probably one of the most well-worked communities as far as working together with city and county and community as well as the USD and the college. And we, he complimented us on a lot of different things. But he's like you, he's wanting to, let's get this, let's get this economy started. Let's open this place back up and get moving because it's important for Kansas to start moving along and getting things done. And we know that we can and we know we will. So thank you.
Okay. All right. That it?
That's it. Other than we got some really good reports.
Some really good reports.
Don't we, Jake?
So Clayton?
Sure. At your tables and in the written reports is a mock-up from Justin Wilson in several different versions as it relates to a logo for the TechEd division. So we had talked for a couple of different meetings about bringing that forward to you. If you're really interested in the detail, you can see the different types, the ideas behind where each logo would go and the standards behind those. I think it's turned out really well. I'm excited in terms of workforce development in TechEd that we have a logo that attaches itself to our division. I know Andrea has worked with us as well and she and I would be happy to stand for any questions there.
How does it stay on the, on the community college letters underneath Dodds City that on white and then again also on the yellow on page three that community college words just almost disappear on that white background? I wonder if we wouldn't be better off going with purple on?
On everything?
Well, maybe not everything. It shows up on the gray and the purple, but it doesn't show up on the yellow or the white at all. The community college part doesn't, it's small.
Is it the square one?
The square one.
It's on page three that, yeah.
That, that logo would be, I think, Dr. Tetro, correct me, but would that be on your uniform?
Right, I think what, what Dan's talking about, Andrea, if you go into the second page as well.
Yeah.
And see where the Dodds City is in blue. Community college is in gold. Basically, we're losing now.
Yeah.
And we can change the colors about.
And that might work, Dan, just to go purple all the way across.
Well, that'd be nice. It'd show up better.
On a white piece in particular since you've got the tech in gold there.
Yeah. But that's.
Good thought.
It looks really good though. I think you guys did a great job on the design.
Kudos, good.
Yes.
My only addition to this would be on the one for our Rants Management Program. And on the tee, we add some long orange to the tee.
There you go.
I like the wheat waving in there, the wheat, all that part of it, but that would be apropos for that program. Yeah, I mean, I would give you some nice conditions. I am supporting a winter livestock act today because they're going to be one of our partners.
And, uh, very good.
Uh, we're really excited about getting that, that thing going.
Good.
Okay. That it, Dr.?
It is.
I have a question for you. I haven't, I haven't any luck with getting apps for HVAC, electrical, and welding.
So with Kristy's help, they're up and they are posted. As of right now, I think we have one application for electrical technology. I know of one additional app that should be coming in in the next couple of days. I know of at least two applications for welding that will be coming. And then I think the big question's going to be HVAC. So I think that's going to probably be the challenge as far as I see it.
And how many instructors are we hiring in each one of those areas?
So one for electrical.
Okay.
One for HVAC and the plans right now are two for welding. I'll know much more by the middle of June as to comfort level with not only number, but also quality of applications.
Okay. And when they apply, are we making sure to inform them of our board policy on gaining a BS or working towards a BS?
Right. I've had conversations about the BS or the bachelor's degree as well as the need for an education development plan.
Okay. Good.
All right, thanks. Is that it, Clayton?
It is.
Okay. All right, next up, we'll go to Jacob.
Thank you, Chairman Harshberger. Obviously, usually at the end of every semester, I report on the academic progress of our student athletes. And very happy to say that I think we have a lot of people to thank. You know, our coaching staff, Abby Shaddick's, our athletic advisor, our faculty. Mike, your IT people have been great helping our students. But for the first time since I've been here, so in six semesters, we had an athletic department overall GPA of over a 3.0. Ended up at a 3.07. We had been, we had been close a couple of times since I've been here, but that's always, that's always my goal with an athletic department as a whole when you're dealing with that number of students. Sometimes it's, you're always going to have some that just the classroom doesn't mean that much to them, but hopefully you'll have enough that it does mean something to them that they get stuff done. And we actually did this semester. And I think if you go through that list and look, you know, with, looking at, we have five teams that were a 3, 5, or better as a team GPA. And that's, that's just almost unbelievable when you look at that with softball being a 3.82. So it's, I thought it was a very good semester for our student athletes. And like I said, I think, I think a lot of people played into it because it wasn't an easy thing with them leaving campus, some of them not having the resources that they needed, some of them scrambling to get the resources that they needed. But, you know, I want to thank our faculty for working with all of our students, especially our student athletes, and the coaches for really staying on top of their teams to make sure things will get done. And then IT helping out every way they can. I thought, I thought that it was, obviously it's a team effort, but more than anything, thank our student athletes for the effort that they put forth in the classroom because I think that's a, that's a big piece of what we try to do here. Individual academic awards will be coming out next month. Academic All-Conference, Academic All-American. Last year, we had 43 Academic All-Americans. Looking at it, just, just right off the top, and we haven't figured exactly, but we're anticipating over 50 this year. So obviously a step up there. And then we'll have eight teams that will be nominated for Academic Team of the Year, which includes both semesters of academic work. So we're, we're in pretty good shape in those cases. I would like to especially mention two of our student athletes, sophomores, that went all the way through with a 4.0 GPA, playing sports and balancing the athletic piece. Tori Setskorn was a volleyball player from Jetmore, Kansas, did a wonderful job. She's a pre-pharmacy major and ended up with a 4.0. And then Mason Sinigar is a men's basketball player from Beaumont, Texas, and he ended with a 4.0 as well in business. And Mason, in addition to obviously the classroom piece, he was also an honorable mention All-Conference player for us. So, and he's pretty, pretty impressive with what he's done. As far as other things that we're doing, we are going to, on our social media, keep an eye out for it actually tomorrow. We're doing some yearly awards. You can see them there in your reports of what those yearly awards are going to be. Nathan and I have spent a ton of time on webinars trying to stay up with best practices on the, on the COVID as we, as we look at moving our student athletes back into practice and competition situations. We're trying to make sure that we stay as up to date as we can. I know we've been in, the last two weeks, we've been in on at least eight webinars between the two of us. In addition to that, we've, there's a group of athletic directors that includes Texas athletic directors and Kansas athletic directors. We've been talking a lot about how we're going to move forward. We've tried to get the Mississippi athletic directors involved with us as well, but they've not been as willing to open up and talk to us about how they're doing things down there. But Texas, well, there's a lot of collaboration going on with athletic directors, especially the football athletic directors in Texas and Kansas, trying to figure out how we can move this thing forward in the best way possible for the school, but also the safety of the student athletes. So I think that's been a, that's been a big piece. And right now, the NJCA's point, their, their discussion, and this has not been public yet, but I've talked to Dr. Parker a little bit and he's basically saying it's going to be region by region, how, how we open up for sports in the fall. It may look different for national championship competitions. We don't know for sure yet. We should have, they're going to make a statement on June 15th about how that will look. But they, the National Office has been pretty adamant about not limiting anybody just because somebody else is not, is not doing it. So with that, first scheduled game is August 20th, Thursday night against Trinity Valley here at home. So football game against Trinity Valley. So we'll see, see how that goes. And then kind of some looking forward, because I know enrollment's always in the, in the front of our minds as we're looking forward, kind of give you a look, kind of a snapshot of where we are today with letters of intent that have come in as well as projected roster sizes. As you can see, currently we have 212 letter of intents. I think that number's a little bit low because a lot of our returning student athletes got out of here without signing one because we were still looking at going through spring football, still looking at finishing baseball season, softball season, track season. So a lot of them got out of here without signing one and we're working on getting up with that right now. Our coaches were working hard enough on the recruiting piece and the retention piece with the academics that had kind of taken a back, a little bit of a back burner. But now that, now that we're through the semester, we're really pushing hard to get the letters of intent done for next year. It can help in our financial aid as well, help our processes for those kids coming in when they do report to school. So we're a little short on LOIs. We're sitting at 212 right now. I think our max number for NJCA sports and obviously CHEER is not an NJCA sport, so can't, I have 18 of them there, but there's not a limit on those. We're limited out at, right at 340 LOIs overall for the department. It's not, I think it's actually a little bit less than that. But, so then this afternoon, when we were talking about enrollment process, somebody was asking, you know, how do we, we were talking a little bit about the band piece. But, so obviously we're looking at 359, which would be up from where we were a year ago on, on student athletes. I think we were at 308 coming in last year. So I've really pushed our, our coaches to try to fill rosters and be, be a little bit higher on our roster numbers. And obviously the addition of CHEER has been a big piece of that. Now rodeo is not in our numbers now, now that that's reporting to Dr. Tetro. I did not include rodeo in our numbers because I didn't have an accurate count on that, but I can include them if I need to. But we were talking this afternoon about how we track students coming in when we had the band discussion a little bit. And I just gave you guys an example of, the spreadsheets, an example of how we track student athletes coming in. And I redacted all the names. I hit the columns with the names and stuff. But you can see we, we have a column for admissions, test scores, making sure we have transcripts. Then have we gotten summer enrollment done, fall enrollment done? And this is, this is outdated right now. I don't have the latest one from Coach Coon. But do we have housing after we have the housing fee? And do we have their FAFSA for, like our incoming kids have to file two FAFSA's because they have to have one for the 1920 in order to go summer, and then they have to have one for 2021 in order to get next year. So we, we track the 1920 FAFSA as well as the 2021 FAFSA and seeing if we know what their EFC is, their estimated family contribution. So those are all things that we try to track and try to keep these up to date so we have an idea of where our student athletes are and where, if they're actually progressing towards getting enrolled here. Because a lot of times, we have a pretty good idea that if they're not, if they're not checking these boxes along the way by mid-June, they're probably not coming. And so that's why we track in spreadsheets like this. I've asked all of my coaches to track spreadsheets like this. So, so that's what, that's what we've done.
A little bit about Brazil?
We're a little bit worried right now. The president put a ban on travel. Anybody that's been to Brazil in the last 14 days being admitted to the country. We have around 14 student athletes from Brazil. So we're worried about whether we're going to be able to get them into the country by, by the time we start fall sports, which obviously the report date, opening day of practice for fall sports is August 1. And a majority of the Brazilian student athletes are in fall sports. So we have soccer and then we have a volleyball player as well. We do have one volleyball player from Brazil. I went back and looked at rosters. So we're, we're a little bit worried about that. I'm worried about all the international, honestly. A little bit of the, with the travel regulations and recommendations. Worried a little bit about all of that, but at the same time, I think we can work through a lot of it. But I had a Brazilian parent today basically telling me, call your government, tell them to lift this ban. Not sure I can do that, but we can, maybe my board chair can do that. So, any other questions?
You know, I have, I'm a little concerned. From what I'm hearing around, scuttled about around country is, and on news reports too, which may be scuttled as well, that a lot of colleges, universities just aren't a place for it. just aren't in place for it until there's a, a vaccine at least.
Um, I would actually say that what I've heard here in the last few weeks would be counter to that. Um, I think, uh, the, the Big Twelve and the SEC have both made some major progress towards, uh, going that direction. There has been, and I, I, there has been one league in California, D-two league in California, that's called off fall sports already. Um, it's all D-two schools. Most of it's in the Cal State University system who have already said they're not going, coming back to campus. Um, there have been, uh, four, uh, junior colleges, four, four members of the NJCA that have canceled sports completely for next year. Um, two of those, uh, two of those have been in Ohio. One of them is on the Upper East Coast, and then one is, interestingly enough, in Texas. Um, but I think that's more, honestly, I think it's more-
Political.
-political and money than it is the COVID laredo.
What would be the mechanics of playing football or basketball or soccer, whatever? Would we, would we test the athletes before each contest?
Well, and that's where we're, those are the things. That's why we're sitting in on these webinars and having these discussions of how are we going to do this? What's the, what's the most effective way for us? Uh, do we need to, uh, quarantine when they're coming in? We talked today on our conference call about notification of other teams. If we do have a positive case pop up on one of our teams, um, you know, and, and we talked about what's, and none of us had the answers to this, but, you know, what's the liability of that? If, if Cali says, hey, we know Ford County's high, but we're sending our team out there to play anyway, um, you know, what's the liability if they take a case back to their campus? And we really, unfortunately, we don't have answers on, on all of those things. This is such a new situation that we don't have answers on at all. And so that's why we're trying to collaborate so much to talk about best practices and how we're going to do things. One of the things that we've talked about with football is, uh, when we do bring them back, to bring them back in, um, in small groups, um, and keep them kind of in, kind of in pods so they would work out together. They'd live in the same area in the dorm. They'd meet together. They, all their meetings would be together. They'd eat together, uh, those types of things. And that way, if you did have somebody exposed, you'd be exposing a group of fifteen to twenty rather than a group of eighty. And if you had to quarantine a group, you'd only have to quarantine a small part of it rather than the whole group. So-
Vegetational facilities, whether they're going to be a college, uh, especially a college though, but even public school, it's going to be a difficult situation because at college, a lot of those kids going to go back to their small communities for a weekend or for a, for a family celebration or something, and Thanksgiving, and, or even just a weekend. And now they're back on campus and, you know, who knows?
Yeah, and that's been another thing that's been discussed. And, and one community college has already decided that they are going to it. They're starting, uh, they're going to start basically a week earlier than they normally would have, and they're sending them home at Thanksgiving. Once they hit Thanksgiving, they're sending them home. They're not bringing them back after Thanksgiving.
Good thing.
First semester. Oh, pardon. I'm talking about in our conference.
In our conference.
But they're, but they're making them stay there all the weekend. They're staying there all- They're staying there, yeah. Theoretically, yes. I don't know how, how they're going to enforce all of that, but yeah.
Well, nobody can force them.
They can enforce them.
We found that out.
Yeah.
True.
You can ask, but you can't-
Exactly. Well, Dave is doing, they're actually, they had played football, and then they're letting everybody out in November, right?
Yeah, they're doing the same thing going home at Thanksgiving.
I would be surprised to see the CDC or state governors saying it's not going to happen.
I have, one of the interesting things that came out today, if you guys paid any attention, they actually put the recommendation in that put, uh, in dormers, you put plexiglass in between the two beds. Uh, I thought that was an interesting recommendation. Yeah, we're not sure how that's going to work when you're circulating air all the way through the dorm.
Exactly.
But, but that was one of the recommendations we wrote. That was kind of the wall. We had that discussion in the A.D.'s meeting.
Okay. All right. All right. Thanks, Jacob. Are you finished?
I am.
All right. Uh, Jane, did you have anything on your reports you wanted to touch on in the school group?
Uh, I believe we, we covered it pretty thoroughly in the work session. Were there questions in particular, either about the document I shared or an update on band in particular?
Uh, yeah, I've got some questions. Uh, how many students do we have that are looking towards coming here for the, to the band program?
So if you have the, this enrollment data in front of you, uh, please, uh, Carla would have put a paper copy here, please. If not, I have a, another copy.
No, I don't have that.
Doctor Miller, can you have this as well? So, uh, Vice Chair Ramsauer had asked to, uh, visit with Rodney, and he was, uh, here with us over the lunch hour. And he has been very actively, um, developing his spreadsheet, uh, since last fall. It's not as detailed perhaps as what Jake described for athletics, but it is a fairly long list of students he's had contact with, and it's organized by instrument and is several pages long. Um, he's actively working with forty students, and he's working very closely with Jorge Australia to get those students enrolled. Uh, this sheet that I have given you indicates that so far we have thirteen students enrolled. And so if I could just describe or explain this sheet a little bit, uh, this is what I can see when I look at J-one. And I, uh, have provided you with information about music courses and other scholarship-based activities. Um, these are activities that are connected to enrollment. So we can kind of look at the courses and assume that this is about how many students we'll have in that activity. Uh, there might be other ways of tracing it, but this is one way I have of accessing that information. So when you look on the first page, uh, you'll see music theory, pep band, jazz ensemble, applied music for woodwinds, for brass, and for percussion. And if you go to the fourth column where it says seats open, uh, you can see that in music theory there are fifty seats open out of fifty seats available. Uh, in other words, there's no enrollment in that particular course. So the closer the numerator and the denominator are, uh, the better it is for us. And so if the top number is a zero, that would mean the class is full. And so when I add up nine, one, one, and two, I get a total of thirteen students. Those are the number of students that we have that are enrolled, uh, for instrumental. Uh, you won't see a marching band course on there. Uh, currently, uh, we're starting with pep band. And depending on our numbers, we'll have pep band, uh, or we'll have a very small marching group, okay? But for this first year, uh, we focus more on, on the pep band. I thought it would be helpful to understand those, uh, numbers in context. It's been a difficult year as we know. Jake has mentioned, uh, some of the delays, for instance, in getting the LOAs, inaccurate, uh, LOIs and accurate numbers there. And so Rodney mentioned today some challenges he'd had, uh, from parents wanting to know what the college is doing to meet the needs of their children and children having some concerns coming here. Some of the students on his list have decided to go elsewhere. Some local students have opted for Garden City, others for Emporia State, just as an example. So we currently have thirteen students who are enrolled. In comparison, uh, the next, uh, set of courses are music or vocal. And, uh, it's not counting, uh, college orientation or understanding music, which, uh, wouldn't necessarily be limited just to vocal students. Uh, you can see, reading down from concert choir to the end of the page, Kerry has about thirty students enrolled. And so he does have more courses, uh, but at any rate, he has about thirty students in comparison uh, to what, uh, Rodney has. Of course, Kerry would have some returning students, uh, which may, uh, which might help understand, uh, some of his numbers. Other activities that are scholarship-based, you can see on, on the third and fourth page.
Um, I would like to say that. I don't think this is a good indicator at all about athletics because our student athletes can only take these classes one time in the time that they're here. You can only transfer two activity hours, uh, beyond, before your school. So if we enroll them more than once in any of these, I don't think it's a, a good indicator. That's why I don't think the enrollment number is a good indicator for athletics.
It's not a criticism of athletics. It's just a way-
You're saying you think it is a good indicator for your classes, and I'm telling you it's not a good indicator for the athletic class.
I'm saying it just provides some helpful context. If Rodney is recruiting people for the first time, then to understand that some of the athletes will only be taking this, these classes their first year, it, it, it offers some, I think, helpful context. And as I said at lunch today, um, I do understand that, uh, we typically don't see enrollment in some of these classes for some of the sports until June and July. Is that, is that accurate?
I, I don't even think ever, on some of them. Yeah.
Okay.
Because these, these courses that are, um, they're not, obviously, our, our coaches don't have a load, so that, that's not a, so they, no matter what enrollment it's, whether it's a enrollment of two or twenty.
And we're discussing now about HPE. Uh, you know, I, I've talked to some students this weekend in different places, and, uh, that was a conversation I had with a couple of them. They were asking me about, do you have an HPE program? And we don't. And so that's something we're going to be looking into, you know. I think it's important. I mean, you know, a lot of them wanted to get in sports administration or, or, uh, physical therapy or things like that. So I think there's an opportunity, especially with athletes. That's a, that's something I've had. And I know Glenn and we've had that conversation, uh, as, as, as well as Clayton. Uh, I'm used to having a very robust HPE and, you know, things like all the kinds of pro, pro, programs or classes they take. So we're, we're, it's, it's going to be a fun conversation, and that's what we're looking at doing some of those kind of things. Because a lot of times, that student's not going to major in biology or do something because they're going to major in history. He's going to major in, in, in a program that sports administration or athletic training or all the different kinds of things that people are involved in. Especially, you know, a lot of, I, I'm sure you guys took some of those classes too when you were here. Did you not?
And if you look at our list, we have some pretty good enrollment today in, in the intro to athletic training and, and also in sports administration. So, um, I'm looking forward to our conversation tomorrow with you and Jake and Nathan about the sports administration program. But I also think this is a great opportunity for us to have more open conversations about the classes that we're offering. Um, if we're continuing to offer these classes with very low enrollment, uh, then maybe it's not a good use of resources. So I'd be happy to have that conversation. And, and also, um, as you mentioned, you've got some very strong students. So we do want to offer them areas that, that offer them, you know, uh, uh, a choice of career and opportunity to transfer to a four-year to continue their, their play as well as their, their academic training. And also, I'd really like us to have some more open conversations about, uh, your, your numbers in athletics so that we can do a better job of making sure we have, uh, the courses that are needed, um, earlier than we have had in the past. So I think, uh, it's a great opportunity for us to visit our processes and the way we communicate, the way we plan, um, as academics and athletics will continue to grow together.
I've got some more questions on, on the band program. If we can go back there for just a minute.
Sure.
Uh, if we're not going to have a marching band, are, do we have our cart miles in front of a horse? Uh, if we're looking at buying uniforms?
I know that Rodney was really excited about the uniform designs that he had, uh, worked to put together with various vendors. Um, we're not in process of ordering any of those uniforms just yet, so we have a clear sense of numbers.
You know, and when, when the last academic year ended, we did have a small but viable orchestra with students participating and community members participating. And this year, that just went away. We just lost focus on that, that, on that small orchestra that had been around for years because we were going in a different direction. And now this direction with thirteen students enrolled in, I know, I know it's early, but thirteen students enrolled in instrumental music? We had more than that year before last.
You had four.
In just that small band.
You just had four, sir.
I'm talking about participation with community also.
Oh, well, you had community members, but you had four.
Yeah, we had, we had community members also in that orchestra participating and-
Dan, I, I, I appreciate your concern because I, I do think music, all, all different types of music is really important to any community and especially to a community college. We did have some conversations early last fall, uh, with Kerry and Jane Lindemood and also Rodney. And we just weren't able to make it work in the fall. And I've been directed to encourage Rodney to focus his time on recruiting, which I believe that he did through the fall and early spring. When we sat down together, Rodney and Kerry and I have put together the fall schedule of classes. Uh, orchestra did come up, and we're thinking that with the pep and jazz band in the fall, we really would like to add, um, orchestra, uh, in the spring and, and hit that hard again with the community members. But if you have thirteen students in, in an instrumental section, uh, they're, they can only do so many ensembles, um, before they can't work or they, they can't perform well in class. So I think we're going to alternate either jazz with orchestra or pep with orchestra. Now, that'll be tough because spring is the heavy, um, basketball season when a pep band is really important, so.
Do we have a list somewhere of, or can Rodney get a list together of useful, um, musical instruments? What we have on hand and-
Yes, yes, sir.
And what he thinks we need. You know, I mean, if we have, I, I don't know, maybe we have enough for everybody already. Maybe we don't. Maybe we don't have the right kind. But I think we maybe ought to look into that, or he ought to let us know where that is. I'd like to know personally what they're, where they are in musical instruments.
Because I would, I would like to see us be ordering those instruments. I think the hesitation has been, what instruments will we need? Who will we recruit? You know, we, uh, for a while, I thought we had, like, um, a whole band of piccolo players, and then I realized the spreadsheet had another page with percussion and then another page with tubas. So I was reassured by that.
I know that I was talking to a, a cello player a year ago or so, and she was really disappointed in this. And she was playing, it was falling apart, the back was coming off of it. You know, I thought, well, we, you know, I'd like to know where we are on musical instruments, what we need to have, and what our prospects really are for, for recruiting, uh, a larger number of students into that program. You know, if we're, if we're letting physics teachers go because they only have one or two students, then, uh, you know, it doesn't make any sense to have a, a band teacher that has one or two students per hour.
And then, then that's exactly, then that's exactly what we're looking at. We're looking at all our, all our, all our fine arts. How many students does our fine arts have? That's why athletics, we're, we're working with athletics. Cheerleading right now, we, we ask them to, to have at least fifteen, and now it's off close to thirty. So, you know, rodeo, same kind of thing.
I think, you know, I'm a big supporter of fine arts over there, and I want, you know, I want it, all those areas, art, music, all that to be successful. So-
Me too.
I'm hoping that Rodney and all of them have great success in getting people here.
Getting those numbers. Exactly.
And I just want to add that this is those students who are enrolled. It doesn't show the prospects or people who are currently filling out their FAFSA's or for whatever reason haven't yet enrolled. But that's our, our fixed number today.
It's pretty early yet. You know, we're getting, we're getting towards the, we're getting there. Our kids are going to start, need to start making up their mind if they haven't yet. So why, why, do you know why some students have opted to go to Gardner and Emporia instead, or?
Um, I, uh, the emails that I was copied on, they're basically saying they decided to go here or there. I think there's one student who had decided to go to Gardner even, uh, when Rodney was talking to her earlier this spring. So, um, I might suggest the person who is going to Emporia is probably, uh, focusing on an ed major or something like that. There's always that. Yeah.
Thank you, Zachary.
Thanks. So we're trying to build good- So we're trying to build good programs and, and, and programs that, that students need and what business needs to go forward. And so when we haven't had a history of having good programs in certain areas, it's- And so when we haven't had a history of having good programs in certain areas, it's gonna take time to build that reputation. Therefore attract those students here and that's exactly what we're trying to do. And you do that by acquiring talent. And we have to get out there and you are doing it, is out there acquiring talent in those fields and in those areas. And then from them, they will build these programs. Clayton, you're doing that in tech. And that's what we're doing in so many different areas. And so it takes time, but it's also having that vision. Jim, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I was gonna just go right with you there, Gary, that, uh, it takes a while to build a program and, you know, a lot of our, our instructors and recruiters, whatever, have been handcuffed. And these kids are sitting out here not knowing for sure whether, you know, what's going on with school, whether we're opening, whether we're not. And, you know, I think we're gonna, it's pretty hard to, to analyze people right now over the last, especially the last three months or four months. So until we all start knowing, and that's, I think, the message our college has gotta get out, that we are open. We're enrolling, we have a football game scheduled, you know, already in August, uh, that we're here and we're gonna be open and make things happen. And, uh, I do know KU, all the NCAA football is on schedule. They're bringing back all the players, uh, July fifteenth and they all gonna have the same amount of practice days. So, um, I, I know that's going forward in the NCAA right now. So, uh, but I guess my point is it's just hard the last three months. And these kids right now, you know, probably even had hardly graduation yet. I mean, it is, some of them are just finishing up with their online stuff. You know, it's just been a, a, was, we all know, hectic. So I think the thing our college can do is make sure the kids know we're open, we're having classes and we're ready to teach you and train you.
Absolutely.
On that note, Gary, the other day in the newspaper, they had this. Is it backwards to you? I don't know. Um, but I looked at that with, it was the class of twenty twenty and it was Buckland, Ingles, Minneola, Cimarron, Kins. I mean, it had all of our small, wonderful communities that have so many students in it. And I looked at it as an opportunity for them to, to grow and learn with us. And I thought, man, they, we have so many kids that we could attract. And, and they may decide to come here because of the finances and things that parents are going through now and the times. Cause we're a, a great opportunity for the public to get a good, sound education at a cheaper price.
Reasonable price.
Yes.
We don't wanna use the word cheap.
No, no, don't use the word cheap.
And, and, and Josie Ragborn, honestly, I think it all depends on the leadership. Each one, each, each one of those programs.
Yeah, and I was gonna bring that up, you know, for Rodney starting a new program, I mean, his enthusiasm, it had the whole room going that night. Talking about the uniforms and all that. He's gonna run into, I mean, he's, whenever you're that enthusiastic and you get that first year and you only got thirteen students, you only got eighteen students. Their true chance is how he keeps his enthusiasm up. Because if he keeps that enthusiasm, enthusiasm up with those thirteen, then the word of mouth from those thirteen kids is gonna go back to other kids that, hey, I got involved, this guy's nuts over this music deal. And it's, it was fun and we had, wish we had more people in it. That's how the program's gonna grow. Now, that's where our leadership comes in, in developing all these things. If we're not getting that kind of excitement and selling that, that product, even the first year or two when it's being, trying to be built, that's when we're gonna fail at it. We can't put any, any barriers or limits on it right now until we see how that goes. But like President Nolte just said, it's enthusiasm, those people show how well and how fast those programs will grow.
Well, I think we've got some really good art programs going, uh, visual art. I think we've got some really, uh, good vocal music programs going. And Rodney's working on getting some instrumental music going. And so, you know, if he can, if he can accomplish that, I'm hoping he can. We can really, yeah, if we can grow those programs, all those programs.
Mm-hmm, that's the mission.
Thanks, Nicky.
Okay. All right, that concludes reports. So we are at the top of the hour. Uh, how about we take a quick five-minute break? Would that serve everybody well? Okay, let's take a quick five-minute break and we'll rejoin at, uh, seven oh one. All right, let's get started again. We'll move on to board action items. So first off, Ida Mae, resolution twenty, twenty dash eleven, student fees for the year two thousand twenty and twenty-one.
This is an action the board must take every year so that the incidental fees that we charge to students can be used for scholarships. The attorney looks over, makes them just as postication as within the resolution before you.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Corgi on the fees?
Well, no, we do this every year. But I, I just think this is as wrong as anything we do here. You know, I just, it, it, I think it creates a real sense of entitlement for the student B, what student A pays for their, for their college. And we're already, take a Ford County student. Their parents are already paying taxes for this place. And then that student comes here and has to pay fifty-four dollars a credit hour to educate some student, maybe from Timbuktu, Alabama. We don't know. But it just, it just rubs me the wrong way. And we may be, that fifty-four dollars may be just enough to keep some poor kid from coming to this college. And, and we're, it doesn't seem right that we're gonna have student A buy student B's education. It just doesn't sit right with me. You know, and I, I know you're familiar with, uh, your own community and, uh, we've got some, we've got some people here that just, that are paying taxes every single year to, to keep this college open. And still, and then can't afford to send their kids here, you know? Because, and I know you're all saying, well, our tuition is, is the lowest around. But if you're charging a, a fifty-four dollar per hour, credit hour fee on top of the tuition, that really is tuition. You can call it what you want. But, and we do, we, we call it a fee. But it's a per hour charge and it's really a tuition. And if you add the fifty-four and the twenty-nine together, it, it, it does create a real hardship on some of our families to send their children here. I, I wish we could find some other way other than having one student, having Suzie pay for Bob's education out here. Cause Suzie's parents are too poor to pay for their, for Suzie's education. And yet, if she comes here, she's gotta pay for hers and Bob's. It, it's not right. It-
Hey, Dan, did you, did you miss the meeting on the Pell Grants? I don't remember if you were there or not, but, but if Suzie doesn't have the money, her parents, they have a Pell Grant that will more than pay for her to go to college and leave her money in her pocket if she lives here. It's our job to educate the Suzies of the world, as you'd say, and help them get these Pell Grants. So I don't know if you missed that meeting or not, but-
Jim, why doesn't, why doesn't, why doesn't student, why doesn't student B get a Pell Grant? So we don't have to have student A pay for, for that education? Why doesn't student B get the Pell Grant?
Student, student A, it gets it from the federal government, doesn't get it from the county or from the state, just so you understand. So if B's not-
I understand. Why doesn't, why doesn't student B, why doesn't student B get the Pell Grant? So we don't have to take money from student A to finance student B's education? Why not, why doesn't student B get the Pell Grant?
Because they're not in that economic category that you're, that you're espousing to, so, uh, kinda missing your point here. Dan, Dan's, Jim's making the point that the, the poor sector that you're talking about, we, how much, how much money we get students in Pell Grants? Huge number.
Yeah.
It's a huge number. And those are the ones, the underadvantage that you're talking about. And then the ones that are out of that category, then even if you take our fees with our, our, our tuition, we're still one of the lowest in the state.
We are the lowest.
We are the lowest in the state, even with that in there. And the, the, the community college, you, from its inception, was never meant to be free college. It's to create opportunity for education, not to give it away.
I, I, well, I guess, I guess you can say that. But, you know, I, I looked at, I was telling Kelly before we started, my wife came across a pamphlet from her first year in college at Dodge City Community College and the tuition was two dollars and seventy cents per credit hour. Now, you and I both know that that did not pay for even one of her instructor's fees, uh, you know, salary. But at that time, the philosophy was the college is being financed by the county for the county, for kids in this county. And the ma- and the main part, for the main part. That, I've played football for South County too, but, uh, you know, we, we've just, you, you can slice it however you want, but the people that are also paying their kids, are paying for their kids to come here, are also paying the taxes to keep this place open. And I think we oughta try to find some way to make it more affordable for at least the Ford County kids. If you wanna charge this fifty-four dollars and give that fifty-four dollars, charge it against out-of-county kids and out-of-state kids and out-of-country kids, charge them more like we've got on our list here, great. Let, let, let's do away with that fifty-four dollars for in-county kids.
If you, if you really wanted to cut tuition and make it cheaper, that means you need to grow the college. You grow the college by attracting students. Kansas in itself has how many educational opportunities? They have nineteen junior colleges in the state? How many small four-year and how many major universities?
Seven technical.
Seven technical plus on top of that community college. So we've gotta get out there and aggressively recruit and have good top-notch programs and be competitive, uh, fee-wise and tuition-wise to attract those students here. And quite frankly, you're not gonna, your, Ford County will not be able to support this college by itself with Ford County students. This isn't gonna happen. We don't have the students for it.
Plus you have housing.
And then plus you have all the investment in housing, which is sports. Sports pays for all the housing. So we have to go out and we have to catch, cast a broader net to attract students from outside the area to come here to, so we can economically teach our Ford County students. And you do that by growing the college. If we just go back to say, if we're just gonna be all Ford County, then how many doors are you gonna shut in this building?
Well, I, I knew I'd be the lone voice on this, but, uh, next year it'll come up again and I know I'll be the lone voice on it again. I just don't think that it's fair for one student, a student, to be paying a fee that's gonna pay for another student's education. It's, it's not right, it's not fair, it never will be.
Then, but what you're advocating then is we put more and more and more of the burden of this college on the taxpayers of Ford County's back. And we need to be easing off that tax burden on the Ford County taxpayer, not adding to it. Cause there's only so much they can handle.
Well, one of the reasons that we have to use Nolte is that we cannot use taxpayer-funded dollars to fund scholarships, athletic scholarships. Uh, we can't use state appropriations, we can't use EdVORM taxes. Now, that's different than any other state that I've been to. Uh, that makes a little bit of a difference. And so that leaves you basically, the only other source is that's your incidental fees, which the legislature has given you authority to do basically anything you want to, at Nolte.
But pretty much every college and university works the same effect way.
They do have a fee, but, I mean, if you look at universities and colleges, a lot of their sports, I'll say athletics, uh, are funded by football. And if they don't have football, and we've already seen this from some NCAA, uh, Cincinnati, I can't remember the school that had had to eliminate some of their programs because, hey, their football, football programs don't even be playing next year. Well, that, that source of revenue to the whole athletic department then was eliminated. And so they had to cut out some of their sports. But unfortunately, this is kind of the, the legislature and the way that Kansas laws are written tie the hands of the board. They can only fund scholarships unless you have a-
Big endowment.
A, yes, a big endowment.
Yes, that would take a Harvard, Princeton endowment.
That would be wonderful.
Well, that's what she is working on and she's doing a great job. You, 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 I mean, you generated a lot of money for the college, so congrats.
But a lot of these scholarships also, we're starting to forget this, a lot of these scholarships are Ford County kids. They are getting these scholarships. They get the, they get the Dean Scholarship, the President's Scholarship. And if you start looking, the Ford County scholarships, you start looking, a lot of these kids are getting, and I started looking, Dan, a lot of these, a lot of these kids, most of these kids are getting scholarships from that, from this, this, this fund.
Yeah, I, I- The majority of, of this fund is going to athletic scholarships and you and I both know that that's true. The, the percentage of increase to the fund, it probably mirrors the rate of increase to our tuition and fee overall increase and room and board increase. So as we increase tuition and fees to our out-of-state, in-state and international students and as we increase their room and board rate, we try to increase the, the scholarships a little bit also. I don't disagree with you, Trustee Roger Borna, and, and, uh, and I wish we could use EdVORM and other, or state appropriation money to help subsidize where we wouldn't have to have that imbalance as you, as you kinda indicated. I think one of the things that would help, and, and I don't know, I, I, I mean, I know it's possible. I don't know if it's, if anybody's willing to do it, but if we recruited more of our athletes from Kansas and that's deep in this area, Kansas City kids, Wichita kids, Scott City kids, maybe not Scott City, Colby kids.
Wow. Some of the good athletes came out of Kansas.
Exactly. How about Buckland? They ain't good athletes come out of Scott.
For athletics, I'm saying, they, they might have a tendency to drive home tonight. But my, the rest of my point was, they're gonna live in the dorms too, you know, from, from broader areas away from Kansas. One of the things that happens is when you recruit Kansas kids, the college is reimbursed by the state for those kids. If we re, we, we get somebody from Alabama, this, we don't get reimbursed for that kid, you know?
But, but you know, most kids, they wanna leave, leave the community, unfortunately.
Okay, but if they come, they may wanna leave the community, but you know, we had kids down here from, from Colby that played football when I was here and they were living, of course, we didn't have any dorms, but they were living on approved campus housing.
I think, I think there's a push within the conference to try to go back to highlighting more of our local grown kids. And I know that's our focus here too, is, is to really embrace our local talent more than going outside. We also wanna be competitive. And we oughta keep in mind, a lot of those out-of-state athletes that come here do bring Pell money, federal money with them, and it's a pretty sizable amount. And that goes into funding these operations.
And I'm not worried about being too competitive. I mean, you can't, you have to be able to beat zero and nine, but, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, but you, whether you get those kids from Alabama or from Colby, Kansas, as long as they're out there playing football, they're enjoying, they're enjoying the sport. And another thing that happens when you get kids that are more local, mom and dad, grandma and grandpa showing up to the game. It doesn't look right to me to have a stadium and there's more kids on the bench that play in football than there are people in the stadium. And if we recruit kids from around this area or at least from Kansas, I, if you got kids from Kansas City, Kansas, and that we had a game here, mom and dad would be in the stands. You know they would be.
I, I will tell you that in football, for sure, we offered over fifty Kansas kids and recruited them hard. And, uh, I think only nine or ten chose to come. But we recruit, we made a strong effort, uh, with Dodge City High School kids, um, they chose to go elsewhere. Uh, we made a very, very strong effort with a number of south-central Kansas kids, um, and they chose to go elsewhere as well. So it's not, I will tell you, our coaches are making the effort to try to sign Kansas kids. And right now, and that's part of the whole being, that, that Chairman Hartsburg is talking about, being competitive. Cause if you just want to play for a competitive team, then, then there's, so there's a big piece of that as well. Yeah, everybody wants something, they wanna win.
Well, not everybody wants to win. Nobody wants to lose, that's the issue.
So I think there's a little bit of that. We're gonna have to, you know, it's, it's the business idea of you're gonna have to spend some money to make some money. And that's what, we're gonna have to spend a little bit of money getting some out-of-state kids in here and getting our programs. and getting our programs, uh, a little more competitive, and then once we get them that way, we'll be more attractive to the Kansas kids.
Kansas kids, because they, they have the ability to go where they wanna go.
Absolutely.
And one of the things, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And then, you know, if you have a winning program, they're gonna be more apt to want to stay here.
Absolutely.
And then students want to also have winning programs at the schools that they're attending. So they, that attracts more students. So one begets the other. And then that's the reason why we're doing the maybe the marching band, or the pep band, and then the, the cheering, and having all the pageantry involved in the sports program for much more people to appreciate and participate in. And that's all got to start, and we're starting it, and we're gonna build, and we're gonna grow these things, and we're gonna be the best dead com- community college in the state.
But I, I, you know, I won't quit pushing for those kids, and for Ford County kids, kids who are poor, having the chance to come here and be successful. And, and you know, next year what comes up, you're gonna hear from me again on this. But I, I already know what the vote is.
You've got three hundred and sixty-
Make sure they get the bill, Chris.
Dan, you've got three hundred and sixty-four days to figure out a budget that'll let us allow us to do this.
I could tell you what it is right now, Jim, but you've already rejected it once, so.
Well, I mean, how we gonna-
Just you're asking more than me.
Yeah, you haven't either, but there's no way of paying for it, with, if you just wanna give it free. But you know, I sent a kid to KU, and I pay an awful lot of state taxes, and you know what? They didn't give it to him for free either. So you could argue this from the top to bottom.
He didn't buy it for fella.
You get, you give everything free, we'll get no results out of the kids or out of the people. So I think right now, we need to build the best programs, like Gary said, and we gotta do the best job recruiting. And I agree with one thing you said, the Kansas athletes, but the JuCo Conference changed that several years ago, where it used to be we could only have, I believe it was four or six out-of-state kids. And today, I don't know what the rules are, and, uh, our A.D. would have to go and tell you that. If you can ever go back to the old days, I do think it would help everybody.
Yeah, basketball with eight, and football, you could have twenty out-of-staters. That's the way it was when I played.
We also have a roster limitation.
And a roster limitation, so. Did you catch all that, Jim? Because, did you catch that?
No, I didn't.
So basketball, I'm sorry, so right now, they passed it a couple of years ago, it's unlimited out-of-state. Basketball was eight, and then prior, and then football, you could have twenty out-of-state on your roster. And then they changed that here, what, four years ago, was it? I think it's been four. So there's, I know, when you have discussions, you're talking about trying to get that work back to maybe favoring more Kansas, and so I think we're all in favor of that. And then going back to education, there's, there's, anything, there's nothing of value out there that's free.
I, I agree with that. You have to pay something, or you don't value the product. Maybe we cut the, maybe if there's, there's a miracle and there's a way to do it, you know, I'm not totally against reducing fees, but you have to have money to operate.
Well, one of the things, I wanted to be very conscious, cognizant of the tuition fees that we charged our Ford County residents, and call it foresight, or providence, or just luck, that last fall, we reduced our online fee from a hundred and thirty-five dollars to just, we just basically eliminated it and said, hey, we're just gonna have one fee, and that's what Ford County students are gonna pay. So now, instead of a hundred and thirty-five dollars, it's like a hundred dollars. So, and now most students are wanting to take online because of, of the virus and things. So if you were taking ten hours last year, Ford County students, you'd be paying one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, when now you're only gonna be paying a thousand dollars. That's a pretty good deal. Uh, the second thing that we did this year, starting this year, is we revised how our scholarships are given out. Before, we just books and tuition. And we couldn't go recruit that star quarterback somewhere that, you know, where Gardner or someplace else is offering him, you know, a lot of money. Well, we said, coaches, instead of doing it the old way, we're gonna give you, here's your, your lump sum of money. You distribute it however you want. So if you wanna give a full scholarship to your star, scar- star quarterback, and maybe a half or quarter to, you know, your offensive lineman, you know, that's up to you. But we let, let the coaches decide that.
But still have roster numbers.
Yes.
Still have full rosters as well. But you, but you've gotta build the program, just like Dan, you were talking about the, the band program. Uh, that one young lady said she wasn't gonna come here, she's gonna Garden City, 'cause the band's better at Garden City than it is at Dodge City. Now, my concern is, we've gotta build those, we gotta build those programs where people wanna come here.
Takes time, it takes effort.
Well, we're also fighting the fact that, I mean, I've got kids that are patients of mine that were all-state, all-conference. One kid went to the Shrine Bowl, selected to go to Shrine Bowl, he just didn't wanna work that hard in college. He'd rather go do a KU or K-State, where he could be involved in all the parties and all the, everything about that, rather than go to a JuCo, or go to a, a NCAA Division Two and work your butt off playing football. It was just, he wanted to go where his friends were going, and they were all going to the big universities. So we're, we're fighting that. When I was in high school, everybody, if you played in high school and you had any success, you wanna go play someplace. You went to Tabor, you went to Dodge City Community College, you went, wherever you could go to extend that from your high school career for two years or four years, to get more out of it. And there's just a lot of kids now that, I don't know, saying we're raising a softer generation, but it, there, there are just a lot of them that don't wanna continue, because it's a lot of work to be in sports and do academics and do that. You, you sacrifice a lot. I, I know what it took to get through, you know, four and a half years of college, and four years of middle school and stuff, and, and doing sports. It's tough, but if you love the sport, knowing that one day you're gonna walk away from that, 'cause I knew I was never gonna be a pro athlete, you better hang on to that as long as you can. Now kids are willing to say, I had a great high school career, I was all-state, uh, you know, made the Shrine Bowl, but, eh, I didn't work that hard to get to college. So that's where we have to have the right coaches, the right band instructors, the right things to build enthusiasm, to make those kids say, hey, you wanna extend that career a couple more years, come over here and do it. If you don't wanna do it after two years, fine.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the fee schedule, Kathy?
Real quick, I, we've talked a lot about the acad- or about the athletics, but on the academic side, Dan, we offered a two thousand dollar scholarship to every top ten student in this area. So not only do we offer, two thousand dollars is gonna pay for them, just about, it's gonna be very close, but academic scholarships are hard to come by a lot of times, and our college did that.
Thanks, Kathy, for bringing that up. So I'll move on. Do I have a motion to approve the 2021 fees as proposed?
I'm, I'm-
I've got a motion to approve, Amaya. Kathy, would yours be a second?
Yes.
Okay, and then I have a second. Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Catch that, Carla? All right, we'll move on to item B, the Great Western Dining Food Service Agreement for 2021?
Yes, the, uh, the contract with Great Western Dining, we, we negotiate that every year. You might remember last year, we received a, a big reduction in the rate due to some sliding scale and revision in the contracts. Uh, this year, they proposed a two percent increase, and I suggested that they come down to one point seven five, which they, which they did. Uh, that agreement is, is ready for your approval. There was a phrase in there that they wanted guaranteed a certain number of days. Uh, I told our associate that, uh, we would likely, that our attorney would not agree to that, and so with the coordination of Mr. Curbs, uh, he, he agreed with me that that was not a good deal for the college, and we got that stricken from the contract.
I was gonna say, I did not like that. That put the college at risk with the unknowns of COVID, so I'm glad we got that stricken.
We went this year, we're going to renegotiate.
Mm-hmm, okay. So that, so then, the, the contract we have in front of us will be changed with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, it's-
The sign scale will be changed.
Sign scale's fine, it's just that the guarantee of ten thirty-four days regardless.
So there's no guarantee of days?
Right.
Got rid of the guarantee of days. Go ahead, Jim.
What's that?
Uh, did you say something? I thought you were making a comment.
Nope, I did not.
Okay, sorry.
Change, no problem.
Well, 'cause your, 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 your voice is still echoing in my head, so apparently. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the Western Dining contract as revised, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, no, no opposed, okay, thank you. Now, we'll go on to the Great Western Dining donation.
Yes, each year, the Great Western Dining Company donates about five thousand dollars to the college that we're teaching at for improvements, equipment, and things. Uh, last year, we bought a couple of pool tables for the students to use, and might do another type of improvement in preparation activities, or whatever the student union might need, uh, this five thousand dollars helps to purchase it.
So, Glenn, and they did this last year, can you kind of give us a rundown of how we utilize that five thousand?
Well, like I said, we, we bought a couple of pool tables. I don't know if you've been down there since. They had the old coin-operated pool tables that were not working. The balls would get lost in the, in, inside of the pool table.
They were there when I was there.
Yeah. So, we, we, we invested in some, some pool tables that are nice that just have pockets, and so you don't lose the ball that way. And so, which, and they're nice with the purple felt on them, and, uh, I'm thinking about, uh, maybe getting a pinball machine for the area next year. Um, asked some students whether they would like pinball. I didn't know if that was something old-school or not. Asked several students, and they said, yeah, if you got one, they might, might like it.
What about some of that gaming stuff?
Well, they've already got, they've already got the new games that they're just selling, so.
When they started, what's the, what's the gaming club called?
The Sports.
Thank you. I'm not up on the lingo, lingo, yeah, yes.
What's the sport, what's the thing where they eat, it eats the?
Pac-Man.
Pac-Man.
It's a little more sophisticated than that now.
That's a little old.
Nick, so you know you're gonna bring up Pong.
Or Galaxia.
Or, or Galaga, Galaga. Well, can you please pass on our gratitude to Great Western Dining for this, this donation? It's, it's very gracious of them to do so.
And they give a thousand dollars to, to athletics too, don't they?
All right, all right, tell them thanks for that. Okay. Do we move on to the CDL fees for next year?
Do we vote, we did vote on it?
Do we vote, we vote to approve a donation?
Yes.
We did? Okay, that seems odd. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Is there, and a second from Jim? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, opposed, same sign? Okay, all right, now we'll move on to the 2021 CDL fees.
In terms of the commercial truck driving license program, um, truck driving really has some good momentum right now. And we have had a great advisory committee meeting, and really feel good about the positive direction in terms of the program itself. Right now, it's only a two-credit-hour program. Um, we're gonna be bringing you a proposal this summer that will expand, um, and make the, the program more reflective in terms of the hours that are spent on that program. But we wanted to get to you, um, in advance of that, um, a fee schedule that is reflective of the value that these students are receiving in terms of the CDL, but also one that we think is, um, at the same time affordable. Um, I have done a, a cost analysis of other, what I would call, full programs across the state, and the typical full program runs from about a hundred and sixty hours to a two-hundred-and-forty hours. Um, Seward County's program, for instance, right now costs thirty-three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Uh, Washburn Texas is about thirty-eight hundred dollars. So even when you figure in the tuition and fees that are gonna come with this program, um, we're well below that, um, in terms of pricing. The other piece we wanted to bring to you is the idea of the automatic transmission versus a, a no-restriction CDL. Um, right now, the, the program, the way Brian Johnson has it set up, we're doing an eight-week program, um, that it, that gives a full restriction, a, a full CDL, no restriction. But we do see some huge value in terms of being able to offer a shorter program with the automatic transmission. So what he and I have talked about is doing a six-week program with the automatic transmission, and an eight-week program with no restriction, and probably setting up a schedule that would allow for students to enroll at certain times of the year, based on which CDL they want. Um, so what we've done in front of you today is a schedule that would actually be scalable, that if at some point we have the ability to add another instructor, um, these, these fees are basically on a per-student basis that would be scalable if we added another instructor, or even down the road, a third instructor. We're feeling really good about what we're bringing to the table, and still think that we're a pretty good value, um, compared to what Seward's charging and Washburn Texas charges.
So Clayton, uh, we talked about this a while back, so refresh my memory. So you brought up the two-hundred-and-forty-hour programs that are out there. Those are more over-the-road, long-haul type programs, and which were not-
And, and from what we've seen, Gary, that really doesn't fit our market. Uh, we, we had great conversation with Budweiser, with Pepsi, with Glaciers. Our program right now is about a hundred and fifty contact hours, and we really feel like that's in a, a sweet spot. Um, we think we could do a, a short program if you wanted to, in the neighborhood of thirty to forty-five hours, that does nothing but get students a CDL. This at least allows some drive time, that gives them some extra time in terms of packing, gives them the time behind the wheel that Budweiser, Pepsi, Glaciers is gonna need. So we really feel like we're in a good spot in terms of the program that is designed, um, and think that that would be right where we need to be in terms of, of moving forward.
Okay, so-
We're kind of filling the niche then.
We really are, we, we really are. Um, they are very open to the idea of even growing students, um, having students coming out of high school. Um, you do have to be eighteen to test, um, in terms of your CDL, um, as a Class A. Um, you have to be twenty-one if you're gonna go interstate. We're not really seeing that need for an interstate program or an over-the-road program right now.
Because they can go elsewhere and get that, but you still have your feelers out there in the market to what it is we need to be providing.
Oh, yeah, very much so. And, and like I said, Budweiser, Glaciers, Pepsi were great in terms of their feedback. Um, and then Kevin with Truck Center, you know, brings a different dynamic to that as well, but he was a part of that group as well.
Don't the, uh, don't the Packer Councils have a need for interstate drivers? I mean, bringing cattle in from Oklahoma Panhandle, Texas Panhandle, and Colorado, and, and taking Bob's feet to New York, or wherever.
Right, and, and Chris and I have a, a meeting with Cargill next week, um, that may change a little bit of that discussion, but in terms of our beverage companies, we're right where we need to be.
But are we thinking then maybe of adding a program, or we'd have that over-the-road program, two-hundred, two-hundred-and-forty-hour program?
I'll, I'll know more next week, Jim.
Meet me with, you know, check with Cargill, and then Ken Zvater on that, and, you know. Check out their needs. Okay, any other questions for Clayton? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Kelly? All those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, opposed, same sign? All right, motion carried. All right, we'll move on to board policy exceptions. So Christie?
So, uh, what we are requesting here is for an exception to board policies. This is our, these three policies here are our vacation policies. They're broken down by classified or hourly employees, and then our program technical employees, and our administration. Uh, what we're running into is that we run our accruals on a fiscal year from July one to June thirty. And with that, we have policies in place, as you can see, that kind of deals with how many you are supposed to or expected to use by the end of that fiscal year, how many you can roll over or you cannot roll over. Um, some policies are dependent upon your service, things of that sort. What we're running into is, obviously, we have a camp, has a campus hasn't closed since March. um, we have had employees still working remotely. Um, obviously, due to travel bans and all types of other things given the pandemic, people have not been able to go on their planned vacations. Um, some employees had, um, you know, two weeks off during this period, or a few days here and there to use their vacation days, and, you know, trips were canceled, flights were canceled, delays, things of that sort were scheduled. So what we're running into is now they have all these vacation days that are unused, paid leave days, and they're about to include them effective June thirtieth. And I've already had several emails requesting, you know, well, can I figure out exactly how many accruals I have left? You know, I'd still like to take them, or I'd like to do them. Well, when our campus opens up June fifteenth, if everybody's on vacation, if you use their vacation days until July one, we're not really open up. Uh, we do have some who have been using them throughout the time. There have been some that still have these vacation times. You know, if they knew that they couldn't work from home that day, they have put in for vacation leave. Um, or if they've been sick, had doctor's appointments, things of that sort, or have, um, you know, tested positive or negative, or needed to quarantine, they have used their sick leave. However, a lot of people have an overabundance of unused leave right now. So what we are asking for is a one-time exception to these policies just for this year in response to the pandemic, to allow employees to roll over a maximum of, um, ten days unless they qualify under the board policies for program technical, for which they qualify for fifteen days. Um, but to roll over ten, whereas normally, this is gonna affect, for the most part, our classified or hourly employees, because of policy reasons, they cannot roll over any days. So rather than them all trying to hustle to take it at the end of the, uh, the fiscal year, and then we go vacation positions, we'd like to roll over ten. If they have more than ten, they, you know, we'll deal with those ones, essentially, they will risk them. The boss is not guaranteeing them ten, it's just if they have ten unused, they may roll it into the twenty, twenty-one year.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm reading here is, it says the timer in five days, is that a different group that I'm reading?
Yeah, so there is, um, coaches, coaches are different, mhm.
Okay, it says administrative and program technical employees.
Yeah, mhm, in their first year of, so program technical and administrative, they're spending a year to serve it.
I don't mind approving that this year, but I, I, I think we ought to make it clear that they need to manage their, their time better, so that next year, this doesn't come up again.
Absolutely, and we've, um, we're gonna have a lot of discussions about this. Actually, when we, um, I'm hoping next month to have a proposal, um, of change to this policy, actually. I'd like to make this go off of year, year's biggest employment, rather than our fiscal year. So then everybody's not panicking at the end of June, trying to use these. It'll help us kinda spread that out. And also, we have talked, for the most part, we don't have an issue with that. We do have two areas specifically, that we do have an issue where they all tend to wait till June. And we've already spoken with those managers last year to kind of avoid this. And so they did have vacation from March on, but, and they haven't been able to do that.
Do you see any complications to administer that?
Administer the service date?
Yeah.
Absolutely not, because it is one of the benefits of ADP. So we will be able to change that.
Do a lot easier, okay.
Yeah, we're writing-
The technology grade following you there. I've been wrapped for that. I just said, my God, this is why we spend a little money on technology.
We have weekly, we have weekly meetings with ADPs, we're going through our conversion, and, um, that was actually one of our topics a couple of weeks ago. I said, if there's any chance you can do it, and they said, oh, they'll probably do that everywhere, and I said, great. So we have to get improved in policy before we do that, but we'd like to set that up.
I was a little bit shocked to see that a full-time coach, uh, one year on the job, has, uh, twenty days.
Yeah, they accrue monthly. They accrue monthly, so it's about one point six eight a month that they accrue.
That's a month's vacation to pay after being here only one year.
Don't do that, Mike, I don't believe you have work.
No.
That's true of program technical and administration as well, actually.
Any, any way you can control, like with, put a stipulation in there, because they're still gonna have those extra ten days. But what if we have another setback, a spike or something else comes, and we need people to be here? Can you say, you can use these as long as, does it interfere with functioning in normal college business we need to have, you know?
Absolutely, that's actually in there.
Okay.
That's a great point, yeah. Some areas practice that, like student affairs, it's kind of an, it's kind of an unwritten rule, like, you know, in August and January, yeah, you're not really taking vacation time during that, to favor or, or the business office.
As long as you got that safety net.
Absolutely, yeah.
And Dan, I just wanted to say to you, I have a little bit of background on this from years. Uh, Dodge City Community College at one point was not financially stable. And instead of giving any raises, they gave extra vacation time. And that has remained. Glenn could give you all the background of that. But people were awarded, and these policies were written to award people by giving them more vacation time, instead of additional salary.
That's a, a month's vacation is a lot of vacation time.
I know, it's amazing, isn't it?
It, it truly is. Maybe just something that we should look at.
There's also a difference, so they're twelve-month employees versus faculty who have a three-month vacation, because they're nine-month members. They're nine-month employees, if that makes sense. So obviously, like, faculty are gonna have a different personal leave, but they also get that summer vacation that's stacked up, cause they're twelve-month employees. So, but we've talked about the vacation leave, so what I propose next month, changes, will take recommendations.
We also have spring breaks that are paid, and Christmas breaks that are paid, or winter breaks that are paid, and fall breaks that are paid. And on top of that, and you add all those paid days, and you have got really two months of paid vacation time.
We don't get, we don't get spring break. Faculty gets spring break off, but administration, it's stacked on.
And technically, we only get, um, Thanksgiving Day and Friday for Thanksgiving, technically. Now, the calendar committee has proposed less than or you're sticking this whole week, but that's not a guarantee.
And probably Christmas, you don't get the whole time either, do you?
No, we are back January second, whereas faculty are not actually, two weeks later.
Yeah.
Fifteen, seventeen, yeah.
Correct.
Usually one week later.
And by the way, speaking as a teacher, teachers get no paid vacation time. We only get paid for the months we're teaching. Although they spread our pay out over twelve months, you could just as soon pay us at nine, and we'd be just as happy. Because that's the time we are working, and that's the time we're really being paid for. And teachers have no paid vacation, except for-
Christmas.
Yeah.
Spring break.
Yeah.
Thanksgiving.
Yes.
All right.
The list goes on. Well, don't we give them like sixty sick days? We have a hundred, was it a hundred and sixty-day, uh, contract? Hundred and sixty-eight day, uh, contract, and they slot up to sixty sick days? So, what their contract could be for a hundred and eight days?
Hopefully, they have the integrity to take those four sick days.
And we have, in my, Seward County, we never had that admission.
No. Nope, I don't think we have ones that would do that. Okay. Just further, I make a motion to accept this one-year change in policy eight-three-one-point-one, eight-three-one-point-two, and eight-three-one-point-three. Thank you, Kelly. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Have a second. Uh, Dan, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? I'm sorry, I'm too, too fast again, all right? So they all approved, there's no nays. Okay, that can finish us off, our board action items, we'll move on to new business. We'll have the first reading of policy six-twenty-eight, operation of college vehicles. So, do you want this?
You want me to read it?
Please. You have both the current version and the proposed version in your book. Surely, we've all had a chance to read and contrast.
So what part am I supposed to read?
None of it.
Oh, okay. I was not sure, Lee.
But if you have, I don't want you to, but if you have, anybody wants to, uh, add any flavor to this, they can, and, and, uh, as we, as we look over this.
Basically, this policy, we should update the old policy. Uh, probably should have put in there, and I noticed we did in part one, about not using any vehicles for personal use. Not be taken home or parked in employee's house, probably not at a liquor store or at a casino either, but, you know.
Yep.
That's personally used.
That is personally used. So let's, so we'll all take this, and we'll read, and then, uh, next, uh, meeting, we'll look to see if we wanna adopt the revised, updated policy. Okay. That, um, consent agenda, have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented to us?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Was that a second? All right.
Yes.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? I'm sorry, I jumped ahead again. Uh, those are all approvals online, right? Okay. Any nays? Anybody vote nay? Okay, no nays. All right, with that, that completes our agenda. Uh, it's good to see everybody again. I'm glad, uh, we had more people present, so excellent. So with that, safe travels home, and y'all take care, and we'll see you next time. Meeting is adjourned.